It's four fifteen, uh, Leanne, I think you're on as well. Uh, it's time for our work session. Um, Madam Protem, can you, uh, Madam Cl- Deputy Clerk, can you please read the role? You gotta take it off mute.
All right, uh, Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Voice.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Mrs. June.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda as proposed in the minutes of the April fifth, twenty twenty-one work session as proposed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Oh, all right, we have an agenda. Uh, first up on the agenda is a discussion, uh, for fire prevention and protection and building regulations. Mr. Peterson, are you here?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, so this is a change to nine dash two dash three. Um, that's the code, the area of the code where we've adopted the international, um, fire code. And we're just adding two sentences to allow the fire chief, uh, discretion to appoint inspectors, um, including the building official and the police department for help in implementing just specific parts of the international fire code. And, um, I think the police department has anticipated the police, fire chief might ask for their assistance for enforcing occupancy issues, specifically maybe after hours and that type of thing. And then also, um, there's currently a building official, um, inspector that helps with some fire inspection issues. So we thought we'd just sort of update that a code section to conform with sort of the reality of the way we're doing things.
Right, Pat, any, uh, Chief, any comments?
I'll just say that, uh, working with Marty on this, I'm appreciative of him looking at, uh, at this section that hasn't been touched in quite a while, and the changes proposed certainly make sense to us. Uh, we do share about ten chapters, uh, with the building code, uh, but a lot of their authority comes for inspection of, uh, current buildings or existing buildings under the fire code. So this is cleaning up the worded, uh, the verbiage in there and, uh, uh, certainly in agreement with it.
Uh, counsel, um, question? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, um, Chief Truilar, does this change any of the procedures that you're currently, um, going through? Does it promote someone to inspector? Does it change any staffing? Are there any changes?
No, there'll, there'll be none. In fact, uh, what I'll need to do is issue a memo or a directive towards the building department and police department, uh, giving some specific directions on what areas of the code. But to answer your question, no, there won't be any change of operations, uh, for all three departments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else, counsel? All right, uh, if there's no other questions, uh, I guess we'll go to the, uh, next item on, uh, the agenda. All right, let me get back to the agenda. Um, could some, can someone please, hey Forrest? Hey Forrest?
Yeah.
Could you, could you mute your line for us, sir? Thank you. All right, um, next up on the agenda, who is it? I'm trying to get back to my-
The SMID for downtown Waterloo.
Noel Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, um, Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, to Jessica for Main Street. They're gonna talk about the, the self-supported municipal improvement district and the timelines and the, uh, the setup of that.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for letting me talk to you today. Um, I want to let you know that I do have a couple of our leaders from our steering committee on the call today to help me answer any questions we might have as we go through this. Let's go ahead and get started. Um, all right, so here's just a quick look at the agenda, some of the things that I'm gonna talk through as we go through Main Street Waterloo's desire and, uh, us wanting to implement a SMID in the downtown Waterloo area. So downtown property owners implement a self-imposed tax to aesthetically and economically improve the downtown district. This is our goal. This is what we're working towards by implementing a SMID. This mechanism will allow business owners and property owners in our defined downtown districts to come together to create a district that will generate funds for specific improvements and services that they want. What is a SMID? There's a whole lot of words. I know that we've met with almost all of you on this call and have talked through this. So I wanna touch on a couple of other things besides what those words say. And that's just a SMID, a self-supporting municipal improvement district, which were first allowed in Iowa starting in nineteen seventy-seven. It's chapter three eighty-six of the Iowa State Code, if you wanna do some, um, light reading. Uh, Iowa conceived of SMIDs as a way for areas to experience blight or growth to finance projects that can create positive conditions for downtown or for businesses. The state viewed this as an opportunity to encourage, excuse me, high levels of local involvement in the development and renewal process. SMIDs have been responsible for high levels of economic development in several communities, and I have just a few of them listed on that last bullet point. This is a self-imposed tax eligible property owners within our district can implement to fund improvements within the designated downtown area. A SMID provides a sustainable funding source that can be relied on for a set period of time, which we'll talk about here in just a little bit as well. Why? Why now? Um, kind of, we've already mentioned, we're familiar with what some of the benefits of what a SMID can do. Uh, but why are we moving forward now as an organization? In twenty nineteen, we held a strategic planning session with, uh, stakeholders in downtown Waterloo, not our boards, city, uh, uh, officials. So many, a large group of people, and we, we, what we brought out of that was we, we need to not keep talking about this. No more talk. We need to move forward. We need to take action. So we need to decide if this is a feasible thing for us to do. And a steering committee was formed. It was made up of business owners, property owners, residents, city staff, downtown workers, and people who are passionate about the reinvigoration downtown Waterloo is seeing. We spent the past year and a half critically thinking about how to implement a SMID and ensure it benefits the property and business owners. In twenty twenty, we partnered with Miss Midwest Studies Group on a feasibility study. We interviewed twenty-one of our top property owners, which by top prior property owners, we were looking at the number of parcels they owned and the taxable valuation. Overall, we had positive reactions from the property owners. Um, some of the things we, some of our takeaways from the feasibility studies, they wanna see more trash cleanup, street and curb appeal, streetscape projects, incubator mentoring, new business grant programs, marketing of downtown, um, more signage and downtown branding, more staff to be able to focus on attracting and developing the businesses in downtown, improved bike path, um, more outdoor spaces like Lincoln Park and Anton's Garden. And of those interviewed, of those twenty-one property owners that we spoke with last year, only one wasn't interested. So those takeaways, what we learned from that study showed us it was time. Now is the time for us to move forward and work with the property owners to implement a SMID. So this is a map of what we are proposing for our district. Uh, in twenty eighteen, uh, Main Street Waterloo did expand our district from what was previously known as a SMID district. And we, we changed that at the state level, just thinking about what do people consider our downtown? We talked to visitors to downtown, residents, businesses, property owners, um, all of, all types of different people as to what they thought of as downtown. Now, as we're moving forward in this process and looking to create this SMID, this district, um, these are the borders that we're looking at. You can see we go from Walnut Street almost all the way over to Washington. On the eastern nor side of the river, we're really following those railroad tracks. Um, and Third Street is the boundaries. When we go across the river, um, we did cross the highway and we're including the Grouse District in that area. They're part of the cultural and arts district and they, they are part of the heart of our downtown and one of the things that makes us unique and amazing. So we wanted to be sure to include them. And then going, uh, uh, over a little bit, uh, around Grand Crossing and including what will be the future Marina site. This is what people really thought of as our downtown district, so that's why we selected these borders. So talking about an oversight committee, I mentioned that we already have developed the steering committee that it's getting us to this part, part of the process and moving us through the implementation of a SMID. That will evolve and become an oversight committee as this gets approved, and we can move forward and we can say that we have a SMID district. We wanna ensure this committee is a representation of business owners, property owners, residents within the district, and to help guide the effectiveness of the SMID. All of these people will have a stake in downtown, so those will be downtown business owners, downtown property owners. We haven't set the terms, um, on, for the voting positions yet. We want to ju- to talk with those property owners and business owners to see what they feel is the right amount for those terms. The oversight committee will select a chair, and that chairperson will have a seat, a voting seat, on the Main Street Waterloo Board of Directors. Um, how will these positions be filled? To get started, the Main Street Waterloo Organization Committee, who is in charge of our nomination process for vacant board positions within our board, will look at applications and nominations to help select this initial oversight committee. Once they're up and running, then they will take over selecting who, uh, and voting in who is a part of this committee. There will be an application or nomination process really modeled after what the city does for their boards and commissions. Once the committee is established, they'll take over everything and they will really manage, um, the, the, the money and how the money is spent and what the goals of this SMID is. All right, now the important stuff, the numbers, um, the rate. What we are proposing is a two dollar for one thousand dollars of taxable value. Um, looking at these examples to kind of just visualize what this would look like. A two dollar for a thousand dollars of taxable value on a five million dollar property is ten thousand dollars annually. Two dollars on a hundred and ninety thousand dollar value, taxable value property is three hundred and eighty dollars annually. Based off of that district that I just showed you and working with a list from the county on taxable and assessed values, we're looking at this could generate a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's a couple of things we're still researching within those development agreements that, um, are in place to make sure we have the right numbers. But this is all based on commercial, industrial, industrial and multi-residential properties. So the funding stream. So first, number one is gonna be the SMID dollars on that self-imposed tax. And then through conversations with property owners, they would like to see the city provide a match to those dollars. So this would be an investment from the community into our city center. Currently, the city invests sixty thousand dollars through a professional servants, service agreement with Main Street Waterloo. This initial ask is of that hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars above that professional service agreement. This match would be specifically for capital improvements within our downtown. We haven't negotiated this, but we're hopeful we can get both parties to the table to find a solution that brings value to downtown. Um, looking at the proposed initial, initial budget that we've come up with, I don't, I'm not gonna show you any actual specific numbers right now because they're gonna change. They're gonna change with the property value as everything gets finalized, and it could change from year to year based off of what that assessed taxable value is on these properties that go through improvements. Um, but we, what we wanna demonstrate is that we're trying to be very good stewards of the money. The first year, we have ideas, but once the oversight committee is established, they will have the voice. We're looking at three strats, three strategies where the funds will be used based on feedback from the feasibility study. The first one, provide resources for coordinated downtown marketing efforts. So this is not marketing our events, this is marketing downtown Waterloo. Two, improve the long-term physical appearance of downtown Waterloo. And three, provide resources for sustainable economic development in downtown Waterloo. We've set these, we've set goals within each of these buckets. Um, the short-term immediate goals are gonna look at the increased visual identification of downtown. This is gonna come through marketing, business grant programs, downtown branding efforts, letting people know you are now in your downtown. These are items we can implement right away that we can see that visual impact from. And these ideas came directly from property owners through that feasibility study. Midterm goals will be defining that footprint of our downtown and connecting the areas within the district. This is gonna can be a continuation of the downtown branding with capital projects such as wavefinding and streetscapes and those types of projects to create that visual impact. Long to, long-term goals will continue the revitalization, continue the marketing, continue the downtown branding, and adding capital projects such as maybe, uh, directory kiosks and gateways into our downtown. So digging in a little bit more specifically into each strategy. Strategy one, looking at a strategic marketing program to improve perceptions and create awareness of the opportunities our downtown has to offer. Again, not marketing our events. This is a lifestyle-based marketing plan to build a strong brand awareness of downtown, encouraging and embracing the live-work-play tagline. Development of the content for downtown marketing efforts will include that, the content creation, and then moving into print, radio, television, digital marketing and in the downtown maps. Looking at strategy two, we've made significant progress in what our downtown looks like, but there's still much to do, and there always will be. Focusing our attention on making the downtown feel more walkable, bikeable, and safer. This strategy will be most heavily weighted with the distribution of funds as it will have the greatest visual impact. We want to build up the core of our community. Project examples are gonna include things like facade and sign grant programs for downtown businesses, branded signage, wavefinding, directory kiosks, um, lighting and tree planting projects, maybe even some benches. Many of these would be in partnership with the city because that is city property. We're not just gonna go rogue and start spending money and, uh, doing things to city property without working with you on that. Let us take some of those smaller projects off your plate. And then that third strategy. Provide leadership that will focus on business recruitment and retention, shifting staff responsibilities and adding to staff to allow me as the director to focus on the main part of my job, economic development. We'll work to develop reports and demonstrate the value of SMID as well as why downtown Waterloo is, is where you should open your business. And then we're also going to work on developing a small business incentive program. This is something small businesses are asking for. They're looking for way, for help to get started, and maybe it's an encouragement to help them decide to start their business in downtown Waterloo versus another community. Potentially, this could be something that helps a struggling business to get over that hump and give them that breathing room so that they don't have to close and they can remain open. The process? We started with a feasibility study. We formed a steering committee. We set goals. We developed an initial budget to work from, determined the management structure, determined our district, and compiled a list of property owners. We're now going public with our intent and finalizing our petition. We're gonna begin meeting with property owners next week to help them understand the value of having a SMID and asking for their support. As you can see from this slide, the petition does require us to have twenty-five percent of all commercial or industrial property owners within the proposed district and signatures representing twenty-five percent of the assessed value of the applicable property types. Well, we want to show that this, the, the community and the business owners or property owners are truly supportive of this initiative, and we feel it's important to set our goals higher. As an organization, our goal is to get seventy-six percent of those property owners to sign this petition and support. So then, the next in the process is we're gonna take everything and we're gonna submit it to the city, and it'll go to planning and zoning, where they'll review the petition and make recommendations to the city council in regard to the district. They'll prepare a report and, um, note the merit and feasibility of the project. And then it'll come to city council, and this is when you guys would set a date of public hearing. Notices will be mailed out to all of the property owners within the, the district. The city council will hold, uh, hearing and on the adoption of the ordinance and have the first reading. While I wanna be optimistic and think that this is gonna have the rules suspended, we are budgeting our time and planning for you to have the full three readings and the adoption of the ordinance. Once approved, the levy rate will be provided to the county to be entered into their system, looking into next year or looking ahead. You guys would consider that city match when you're working on the budgeting for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And then payment. The property owners will make their first payment with the September twenty twenty-two property tax assessment. It'll be included on their blackout county property tax bill and paid directly to the county. A check will be issued to Main Street Waterloo for this SMID dollars, and we plan to have a separate bank account set up to ensure transparency of the money coming in and where the money is going and that it's being used as intended. So the next steps is take input from when I open this up for questions. Take your input and anything else you guys have for me, if you could get that to me by April twenty-third, which is Friday, and take that into consideration as we're working through this process. Um, in May and June, our team is going to be meeting with, uh, the more than a hundred property owners in our downtown to have this conversation with them. And then we will submit the petitions and any other documentation to the city before the end of June, so that way it is in the city's hands and ready to be on the July planning and zoning agenda. What is our ask of city council? I'm asking you to support this. This is, um, this is a positive thing for downtown Waterloo, and it is a self-imposed tax. So if the property owners are signing, it shows that they're excited and they're willing to do this. And then we're asking the city to match the funds collected with SMID to be reinvested into the downtown. So that's my presentation. Um, I was gonna just throw up here my contact information to send me stuff, but I'm definitely ready to open it up for questions.
Yes, uh, uh, Pat Morrissey here.
Hi, Pat.
How are you?
I'm doing good.
Okay, well, uh, I think it's about time. I fully support this. I fully support the idea of the city match, and you definitely have my vote.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, questions?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I've been working with Jessica and the committee on this for well over a year. Lots of time and energy put into it, and I agree with Mr. Morrissey. This is good for downtown. It's good for all of Waterloo. Um, as Donna Nelson once told me years ago, um, a city can't thrive without the heart of the city thriving, and that being our downtown, and so I fully embrace that. They've put countless hours of work into this, and Jessica, I hope you'll introduce the other members of the committee that are here. But congratulations to everybody. We used to have a SMID, and it's past time to get it reinstated. So I totally support it and thank the committee that's been working on this. Thank you.
Um, yeah, quick before anyone else says anything, we do have Barry Richter and, um, Tom on, on the call. Oh, there he is, Tom Powers is on the call. Uh, they have been instrumental in moving this forward and helping with that critical thinking and making sure we have the questions answered for those property owners.
All right, other questions? Mr. Bowson?
Thank you. So Jessica, what you're asking for is, is a hundred and fifty thousand on top of the money that we already support Main Street with of the sixty thousand?
That, that is our initial ask, yes.
Your initial asking, and, 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 and I really appreciate all the answers here, the, 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 the long list of questions I gave you today. Uh, because you, what, one thing you didn't address in this presentation is the sunset clause. Can you speak to that?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. I must have skipped over that, um, as I was going through. Yes, the sunset clause. So this, uh, this is what we're proposing is this would be five-year sunset, which means this would be in place for five years if, if approved. And, um, it also means that in four years, I'm gonna be coming back to you doing the same thing so we can go for renewal to do this again for another five years or so after that.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause my concern is, is each and every budget year where we're gonna come up with money. And, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, on top of, of what we already support Main Street. It is, is a large chunk of money. It doesn't seem like it in a forty to sixty million, you know, million-dollar budget, but it is. When we're, when we're scrapping for pennies to keep our tax levy lower. So, so those, those are my concerns. Can you tell me just off, based on your research, what the taxable value of the properties that would be included in a SMID and, and your boundaries are?
Um, uh, let me see if I can pull up that sheet quick here.
So you guys did research that, correct?
We did, and I do have it. I just didn't have that sheet pulled up, so I've got it. Let me see, um. Wanna make her look at the right column here. The taxable value of with, um, yeah, the taxable value is about sixty-six million eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars.
So, and then what would, what would they be paying taxes on? I mean, 'cause this isn't, but that, this is taxable value, but we don't do residential that's in that SMID, correct?
No, there's no residential, so it's some, it's, it's their classified, commercial, industrial, and currently multi-residential. And we can help any of the property owners find out how that they are labeled, and that's through the county.
But when you, when you address multi-residential and they're, they're getting rolled back to be equal to residential property. So for, for their, for, for what we're, what we're taxing them at, I'm just curious if, why multi-residential isn't included as residential if the state's working to roll that back now?
So currently, um, multi-residential is included in what can be included in a SMID based on how the original ordinance and code was set up. Uh, what's going through legislation now is to remove that and have them be residential, and we are taking that into account. It would affect the SMID, uh, revenue by about thirty thousand dollars. We don't, there's still a lot going on with it, and there's not a clear explanation of what it looks like with that new legislation. So we're working with the state, and we've hired on, um, Dorsey and Whitney Law Firm to help us through this process, and they've actually, they were part of who helped write the code initially back in seventy-seven.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is if you, if your state, you have sixty-six million dollars worth of, uh, taxable value, and then we do our commercial rollback and, and, uh, multi-residential rollback, I'm, I'm, I'm curious how we only come up with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars at two dollars a taxable thousand?
Um, you, we have, there's no exempted properties in there and no city properties, and all the residential is out. So based off of the reports that we bring in from the twenty-twenty valuations, um, it, that was the number that we had in here. It does include the multi-residential, but not the other ones. And if it's a multi-residential and they have it condo-ed out, so it's an individual parcel, that's considered residential, which is how several of our downtown multi-residential properties are, so they are already excluded from this.
And so when that's sixty-six million dollars, you're including like the nonprofits, like the Grouse, the city buildings, everything else like that?
That sixty-six has been excluded. There, they've already been taken out of that valuation.
Okay, and let's see, I had a couple more things written down, but oh, my next question was, is, as taxable values rise and, and, and lower, and things are on the tax roll or taken off the tax rolls, does this city match change annually?
Um, I, I guess that would probably be part of our conversation, um, as to, as for that part of we, we will have an agree with the city and what that's like and all written into that agreement.
And, and one last question, what about the, the, the commercial property owners that, and industrial properties that don't wanna belong to a SMID? But let's say seventy-five percent of the people that were, that were polled agree with the SMID and twenty-five percent, and they could be some high-stake property owners want nothing to do with it?
Um, unfortunately, that is the thing with SMID. Once you develop a district, if you get the percentage of property owners to sign on and in that district participates.
So whether, whether they agree with it or not, they're, they're gonna be, but whatever this council passes, they're gonna be forced to pay it.
Yes, but remember that it is, uh, it is voluntary on the fact that we would have the majority of the property owners wanting this to be implemented.
Right. But, but my point is, is if they chose, if they chose not to be part of SMID, it's not voluntary.
Correct. It's not voluntary whether they pay, voluntary whether they support it.
And, and, and what is, what is the mechanism to require them to pay that?
To require them to pay the dollars? It'll be part of their, their county taxes. So however, the county gets their money for their taxes because it'll be added in as a levy. There, there is, there is a chance that if there's people who don't support it, there's, there's a portion or a clause within the code that says if they can get 40% of the property owners and that represents 40% of the assessed value, then they could kill this, but they would have to get 40% on a counter.
My concern was is that, is how, how we, how you or us collect it and you're, you're saying that that's going to be an additional levy that the county puts on to their annual property taxes because we're, we're not voting on, or to even bring up the 130,000 to 150,000 until, until next budget year, but yet it's going to be assessed on their taxes in September of '22.
Right.
If it passes based on your timeline.
Right. Correct.
Okay. Thank, that's all I have, sir.
All right. Other questions?
Mayor, if nobody else has one, I just have a second comment. And, and I know this will be up for negotiations with the council next year, but my preference is to have the 150,000 from the city come from the downtown Tiff district. And so that won't impact the, the property tax levy. It would come out of the Tiff. So in addressing Dave's question, that 150,000 could, if negotiated as such, come out of the Tiff district.
Right. We'll certainly discuss that, ways to pay for it. So thank you. Thank you for all your questions. Is there anyone else? Right, Jessica and the rest of your board members, thank you so much. We've been at this for a couple of years or so, trying to take a look at how we can get this done, support downtown. So you guys have been doing an incredible job moving this community forward. As was mentioned, downtown is our heart, so that heart is pumping pretty well right now and we want to strengthen that. So thank you all for all of your efforts and sharing as the liaison and whoever else is the liaison as well. We appreciate all your efforts and we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Barry.
We are adjourned. Thank you.